Good evening, everyone. I call this April 25th, 2022, meeting of the Planning Commission to Order. First, I would like to welcome everyone back to our first in-person meeting in a while. I would also like to say, this is my first meeting as Chair of the Planning Commission, and although it may take a few meetings to get accustomed to be in Chair, please correct me, anyone, if I am wrong on or make any procedural errors. I've got many notes that I have written down, so I'll be referring to them if you see me looking. I also want to talk about what the Planning Commission is. The Planning Commission is a voluntary citizen board. The Commission's function is to consider land use applications and to make recommendations to the City Council. The purpose of the public hearing is to invite testimony from members of the public regarding proposed projects that are pending before the Commission. The Commission will hear testimony from persons present who wish to speak about the agenda items before us today, as well as online and on the phone. I ask that everyone be courteous and respectful to one another. Speakers will only be recognized after approaching the podium, and only one person shall be speaking at a time. Please do not interrupt the speaker and remain quiet while others are giving testimony. Interruptions, loud objections, clapping, et cetera, is prohibited, and this can be intimidating to those who may wish to testify with a different viewpoint. If you wish to testify, please state your name, address, and the organization you represent, if any, and sign in at the podium. Each person will be given five minutes to make their comments, or 10 minutes if speaking as a representative of a group. The first item on our agenda is approval of the minutes of the Joint Planning Commission, Community Services Commission, and City Council Work Session of March 28, 2022, the regular Planning Commission meeting on March 28, 2022, and the Joint Planning Commission, HRA, and City Council Work Session on April 12, 2022. Do I have a motion for the approval of the minutes?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
I second.
Do we have any discussion of those minutes? We'll take a favor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. The motion passes. We will now have an open forum for an opportunity for the public to address the Planning Commission for items not on the agenda. If you wish to testify at the open forum public hearing, the call-in number for tonight's meeting is area code 415-655-0001, and the meeting ID is 2467-722-5640. If you are here in person, please sign in at the podium. If you are joining remotely via phone, please raise your hand, and you will be unmuted by staff when it is your turn to speak. Please state your name and address, and the organization you represent. Each person, again, will be given five minutes to make their comments, or 10 minutes if speaking as a representative to staff. Were there any emails or voice messages that came in prior?
Chair Rudolph, there were none.
Do we have any callers? Do we have anybody that would like to speak at the open forum? Anything that's not currently on our agenda, ma'am? All right, I would like... I would like to close the open forum, the public hearing. Do we have a motion to close the public hearing? I don't... No, no... Okay. All right. The next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Chair Rudolph, so moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. The next item on the agenda is, under other business, is a consideration of a resolution finding that the acquisition and disposition of 151666 East by the Housing and Redevelopment Authority is consistent with the Ridgefield Comprehensive Plan. Staff, do we have a report?
Chair Rudolph, members of the Commission, I am Julie Urban, our Assistant Community Development Director, and I'm going to present this report this evening. The property located at 151666 East has been the home to a world of fish for the past 48 years. As the property and business owners look to close the business and head into retirement, they have approached the HRA to negotiate the sale of their property for future redevelopment. The HRA has authorized staff to negotiate an offer on the property and will consider a purchase agreement at a future meeting likely in May. If purchased, staff would likely hold the property for future commercial redevelopment. When there is additional staff capacity, marketing of the property for redevelopment could become more proactive. Acquisition and disposition of property by the HRA requires a finding of consistency with the comprehensive plan. Staff believes the purchase of this property is consistent with the 2040 Comprehensive Plan, which designates the property as community commercial. And again, Chapter 462 of Minnesota State Statues requires that whenever any public agency buys or sells property within the city, the Planning Commission must review the acquisition and disposition for consistency with the city's comprehensive plan. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer those.
Any questions, Commissioners? Do we have a motion on this item?
I'll move we approve a resolution finding the acquisition and disposition of 151666 East by the Housing and Redevelopment Authority is consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Do we have a second?
Seconded.
All in favor? Move to a vote? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, say no? The item passes? Item number three. We have to cancel a public hearing to consider a request for an amended plan unit development, final development plan, and conditional use permit to allow structured parking at 6500 Nicollet Avenue South, Partnership Academy. Staff, do we have a report?
Thank you, Chair Rudolph, members of the Planning Commission. Partnership Academy submitted an application for structured parking earlier this month, as was a follow-up to their April 12 approval of the proposed building addition there at 6500, excuse me, Nicollet Avenue. That approval specifically had a provision that required the applicant enter into agreements prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy that outlines the timing and circumstances for delivery of a future parking solution should the lease with the hub go away. Pursuant to the April 12 approval, it was worked such that there would be sufficient language from their perspective that they would not necessarily need to come right away in with the request for the structured parking. Basically, by allowing a separate agreement, we are basically giving them time to fully assess and pursue their options. So the public hearing for this item was scheduled and noticed, so the action tonight would be a cancellation of that, and that would be by a motion. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
How procedurally, do we need to have a public hearing then, or open a public hearing, assuming?
The action tonight would be canceling the public hearing, since they are no longer pursuing the application at this time?
So we have any discussion?
Question?
Commissioner Sturridge?
Could you explain what the City Council's approval was? Did it come with any conditions, or just curious if you could give a little bit of background about that?
There are a number of conditions. So the one that is central to this is that the applicant was required to submit plans within two years of the approval that would either allow them to build a... or that would entitle them to build a structured parking ramp, buy additional property, or basically get a covenant for additional property that would provide 80 stalls for their parking needs. And the timing and circumstances, as I mentioned, are to be laid out in a private agreement that they enter into with the city that outlines, again, the responsibilities and timing of that. So that was the primary condition that I think would be of interest for this request.
Was there discussion, I'm sorry, I should have listened to the meeting, was there discussion about if either of those options are not met, what would happen?
So the direction of the council was that if they don't follow through, there would be, at least initially, if they don't follow through, there would be a penalty imposed for every year that they're out of compliance with that, with the intention that that provides sufficient incentive to address the situation.
Commissioner, sir?
Thanks. I noticed in the summary in our agenda, it said that the applicant, or at the time of submittal, the applicant believed that the approval of a structured parking ramp was required in order to secure financing for their project. Was that, did they, was it believed that that was a condition of approval by the city, or was that, did that turn out not to be correct?
That was an understanding from the advice that they got from their council in regards to securing financing, so they have to solicit bonds, since they're nonprofit. So at the time of the submittal, it was before the specific condition was applied that allowed them to enter into agreement that would sort of give them enough flexibility to pursue and give them time to pursue their options to address parking. The way that it was expected at the time, or anticipated at the time of their submittal, they were under the impression that they needed to get entitlements for the parking ramp in order for their underwriters, basically, to approve the financing. But that's no longer the case with the revised language.
Okay, I see.
Any more questions? So I would assume at this point, we would go through a motion?
Yep. And the motion is to cancel this public hearing.
I'll move to cancel a public hearing to consider requests for an amended PUD, final plan development, and conditional use permit to allow structured parking at 6500 Nicollet Avenue South for Partnership Academy.
Commissioner Conaly, seconds.
Do we have any discussion? At this time, we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. The motion passes to cancel a public hearing to consider a request for an amended plan unit development, final development plan, and conditional use permit to allow structured parking at 6500 Nicollet Avenue South. The next item on our agenda is to have a public hearing to consider a request for a comprehensive plan amendment, plan unit development, final development plan, and conditional use permit for multifamily development at 7700 Pillsbury Avenue South. Staff, do we have a report?
Thank you, Chair Rudolph, members of the Planning Commission. MWF Properties, the applicant, has submitted requests for land use approvals for a multifamily development at 7700 Pillsbury Avenue. The proposal consists of 55 residential units within a four-story building. The subject property is currently zoned mixed-use neighborhood and is guided by the 2040 Comprehensive Plan as medium-density residential. The applicant is seeking approval of a comprehensive plan amendment, plan unit development, final development plan, and conditional use permit. This comprehensive plan amendment is being pursued to re-guide the site as high-density residential. The high-density residential future land use category is intended to allow for multifamily uses at a density of 35 to 100 units per acre in areas convenient to transportation, shopping, and social services necessary to support those higher concentrations of people. The proposed density of the development would be 58 units per acre, and therefore, it would fall within the requested high-density residential guidelines. Additionally, this site is within an area having high connectivity to transportation networks and amenities, aligning with the intended character of the high-density residential areas. The proposed building would be located with its massing up along the 77th Street corridor and a primary entrance for the development facing Pillsbury Avenue. Off-street parking and an outdoor recreational lot are provided to the south of the building. Additional vehicle and bicycle parking would be provided in a basement-level garage. The pedestrian environment along 77th Street is enhanced by street-level patios for first-floor units along the sidewalk, and the proposed architectural design includes visual interest by way of hearing materials and breaks of massing through building articulation. The general design language of this particular development is consistent with that of recently approved projects in the city. Proposed as a planned unit development, the applicant is requesting flexibility with regards to the standards contained in the zoning ordinance. Flexibility in PUDs is granted in exchange for efficient use of land and resources to encourage innovation in planning and building design, and for a well-designed project that successfully is integrated into the neighborhood. Staff finds that this particular project warrants application of the PUD form of approval through the use of quality architectural design that responds to the vision of the comprehensive plan and provides a reasonable amount of amenities for a site situated between the commercial areas to the east and south, and the residences to the north across 77th Street. Furthermore, the zoning code provisions that the applicant is seeking relief from are relatively minor in nature, and staff finds that the overall design of the project generally meets the intent of these individual zoning provisions. The most consequential relief is related to exceeding the required maximum of off-street parking stalls and also exceeding the impervious surface maximum. Staff finds that the proposal reasonably balances the tension between providing for off-street parking needs and impervious coverage and its associated benefits. Should the Planning Commission and City Council, I guess, disagree with this balancing of needs, could look to, the city's had success with utilizing future parking or reserved parking where the stalls are still planned for, but yet only improved at a time when it's documented and demonstrated that a parking need is present in a site. So per city policy, land use requests that involve comprehensive plan amendments and rezoning, there's a neighborhood meeting that's required. The applicant held that meeting on April 13 and can speak to some of the particular concerns and questions that were raised at that meeting, but generally, there were two attendees at that meeting, and they expressed concern regarding compatibility of their commercial property and issues mostly that may come about when there's construction activities going on and circulation. The applicant has indicated that they could work and find solutions to those issues. Again, they can speak to that meeting with more detail. The site in question is, in terms of size and eligibility for the planned unit development, it is .94 acres in size when you are excluding a right-of-way easement. Including the right-of-way easement is 1.3 acres, and that easement is the 77th Street corridor and associated median and sidewalk area. So it does meet the one-acre minimum eligibility. Staff finds that the project meets the intent and policies of the comprehensive plan and code requirements for mixed development, therefore, we are recommending approval of the project. Again, as I mentioned, the applicant has a representative in attendance and certainly can speak to any questions that you have, but otherwise, tonight, we're looking for the Commission to open and close a public hearing, and by motion, recommend approval of a resolution amending the comprehensive plan, recommend approval of the resolution rezoning the property from mixed-use neighborhood to planned mixed-use, and then recommending approval of the planned unit development conditional use permit and final development plan resolution. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Ryan. Commissioners, do you have any questions at this time? And as a reminder, we'll have another opportunity for questions after the public hearing.
Chair Rudolph, I have a couple of questions. Hope I can find them for staff.
Commissioner, come on, go ahead.
Sorry if this is buried in there, but you said, so it would just be, the site would be re-guided as high-density? Normally, we kind of, you know, that, how is that different than spot zoning or something?
I'll kind of take you through the history, which might illuminate your particular question. So the, basically, this whole block quadrant, properties to the south and to the east are a plan for high-density residential. This is the only site that's guided south of 75 for medium-density residential. That's reflective of actions that occurred previously. Specifically, the date was around, second, let me find that particular date. That's important to note. So in 2015, there was a corridor study of the I-94 corridor, and envisioned the whole corridor as having a mix of uses, a complete neighborhood of residential and commercial activities. This particular block was guided for higher-density residential at that time. In 2000, and then in 2009, a comprehensive plan amendment went in place and reflected that high-density residential guidance. Then even later in 2009, in response to a particular development proposal, the site was re-guided to medium-density, reflective of the development plan. It was 15 townhomes, so that was in line with, at that time, a medium-density residential guidance. That project never came together, and the medium-density guidance persisted up until the 2040 plan because of that previous action.
Okay, just follow-up to that is, so it was guided medium only because townhomes were going to be built there? Like, why wasn't it just guided high, even if only medium was going to be built at that time?
Yep. I think that was a policy decision that they felt that the site was suited for, basically, at that time, it didn't need a PUD to be approved for a townhome development. It could be a straight project. I think the fact that it is a PUD is reflective that, you know, 55 and the proposed units per acre is probably close to the upper range, given, you know, we won't want to deviate too much from too many of our standards in application of the PUD. So it's, at the end, it's a policy decision.
Thank you.
Staff, I've got a question for you. For those of us on the Planning Commission that may be aware what a planned unit development it is, but the many people, maybe even the audience, that's not aware of what a PUD is, if you could explain it a little bit?
So a planned unit development is a form of development that's meant to encourage a flexibility and a cohesive and innovative product. So it allows for certain deviations to be granted for specific code provisions that would otherwise be applicable. For example, in this, in this case, were they not to pursue the planned unit development route, they would have to modify their plans to meet all the specific letters of the law for the code, so they wouldn't be afforded any setback variations or any of the deviations. So the intent is, by providing flexibility to some of these standards, we are providing a better overall product through the planned unit development.
Thank you. The second question I have is, if you could help me and the rest of the Commission understand additional considerations with this property, as it is less than one acre, and my understanding of the code, it wouldn't be initial criteria for a PUD without additional considerations?
So not including the right-of-way, this site is .94 acres, but when you include the right-of-way, it is over one acre, and the code allows consideration of that right-of-way space when it's integral to the, to the design of the product, to the project. This project has a pretty strong pedestrian realm around 77th, so we've determined that the right-of-way is really kind of part of this, and they would improve it with landscaping in this case. So in light of that, we feel it's appropriate to apply the planned unit development.
And the last question I have at this point is, I know it's a staff report, the city engineers weren't completely signed off on the drainage plan. What concerns do we have that this could lead to further safety issues with flooding?
So that, that language that was in the staff report does refer to the fact that review is still ongoing. Typically, they're at the level that they would be reviewing plans for a building plan submittal, so from my understanding, the city engineer is comfortable with their at, although they haven't finalized the plans, there's sufficient belief that they can meet all of their concerns. But just that, that step of that final sign-off hasn't occurred, but again, no, no serious concerns that they wouldn't be able to, to meet the city standard.
Do we have any other questions at this moment? At this time, Commissioner, sir?
Yes, just a little bit more history on the property. It says this used to be the Public Works site. How long has the property been vacant in total, and how long has this, this proposal been in the works for this development?
Julie Urban would know that very well.
I believe Public Works moved out maybe in 2008, something like that, maybe even earlier than that. We demolished the property a few years later, but so it's been vacant for quite some time. And then we've been working with this particular developer since 2019. They are seeking affordable low-income housing tax credits as a way to finance the project, and they went in for those tax credits in 2019 and weren't awarded, and then sort of restrategized and came up with a new way of approaching the project, and so now they're going back in for tax credits again this year.
Do, do we want the applicant to speak before we open the public hearing? Can he have a moment to say a few things? If you could please state your name and who you represent and sign in on the log over there.
Ryan Schukert with MWF Properties. Address is 764-3251 Louisiana Avenue South, St. Louis Park, Minnesota. I'm here representing MWF Properties, or the developer on the project. Brian did a great job in the staff report, going over everything, and I really don't have much to add. I just did want to add that we worked hard with staff for the last few months to give and take a few things on the project. We added a lot of community space to the project, some patios, some community patios, some French balconies, and two other things that I think helped improve the project a lot from city staff's feedback. So I want to thank them for working with us on this, and hopefully, we'll put plenty of the project, even though there are some inflexibility we're looking for. I think we've added back a lot of things that make this a good balance, but feasible, and helps improve the project as much as possible. So thank you for working with us on that, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
And one of my questions was, you know, I notice the property butts up to a railroad, and, you know, the fences aren't that high, as well as the access to that railroad, you know, being concerned about, you know, children getting access and deciding, hey, I want to go hang out on the railroad and go play. being concerned about, you know, children getting access and deciding, hey, I want to go hang out on the railroad and go play. You know, that's one of my concerns. Have you done any studies or have you got any plans to address, you know, being right next to the railroad there?
Yeah, that's a good question. And funny enough, we, I'm going to open our office, we have four, our most recent project we've built, a budding railroad. And we've had no issues with those projects. We built fencing normally. And in this case, most of that western border will have a large painting wall. Only access, I guess, toward the railroad track will be out of the west entrance. And I guess, as we review and put together our full plans, we'll just make sure that there's proper protection for kids. And a lot of times with our full plans, we have our property management company who we're affiliated with review our plans, go over them with us and architect, and they'll bring up things like that, safety concerns, other things. And we just haven't gotten that far into the process yet. But at that point, I'm sure if there's any issues, we'll address them. But I don't anticipate any big concern being next to her.
Yes.
Johnson? Sorry. I'm concerned about the parking variance, because I feel like that's moving in the wrong direction to actually give more off-street parking, more impervious space. What's the reasoning that you, I mean, I see that because there's three-bedroom units that you think a higher increase. What, how strongly do you feel about those extra spaces?
Yep. That's a good question. That was brought up a lot with staff. We have a lot of projects in the Twin Cities with a project on Lyndale in Bloomington, Donald Chocky Road in Bloomington, and a few others that are kind of first-ring suburbs up in northeast metro. And we did a parking study where we looked at how many units per bedroom, units per stalls per bedroom, stalls per unit that we had at those properties, and we had our manager count taking spots at night for a few days to kind of get an idea of if we were at max capacity at night or if we weren't. And based upon that study, we thought that at least 1.5 stalls per unit was necessary in this type of development to make sure that we have adequate parking on our site. This is important to us, because we've had situations where we didn't have adequate parking. Then that causes our neighbors to be mad at us when people are parking on the street or, you know, in front of their businesses and other things. And the street to the east of us, you can't park on the west side of that for the reduces off-street parking abilities. And that was actually one of the concerns that one of the neighbors brought up at our neighborhood meeting, was ensuring that we didn't have people spilling over and parking off our lot. So, through our research, you're not going to find many developers that ask to exceed a maximum parking. So, just know that if we're asking for that, it's important that we do that. And we think it's important for the project that it has the adequate parking, the amount of parking that we think is adequate.
Having done a site visit, I guess I concur with him, because there's very limited parking. There really is no parking across the street, because of business is being, driveways and things like that. You know, one of the other concerns I had was in reading the report from the engineers, they were concerned about a failure in the drainage system could cause severe flooding. Are you okay with if we have any conditions to make sure that they sign off on this, on your plan?
I mean, you could require whatever you need to require. You know, we use a civil site group as our civil engineer. We've used them on a lot of our projects in Twin Cities. And we've had situations set up like this, where the drainage goes to the basement, and we have pumps that pump it up to the street level. And every city differs, and a lot of cities don't require any overflow or flooding prevention metrics or prevention methods, I guess. So, this is more of a restrictive measure, I guess, than other cities that we've seen, which is fine. But the comment that we're putting underground storage tank under the parking lot to handle any 100-year flood overflow that happens if the pumps stop. So, we think that they're not going to stop working, and unlikely they're ever. We'll be flooding, but if there is, we have a backup measure to combat that.
Commissioner Holmberg, Johnson?
I just had a question for Ryan. Just returning to the parking issue for a second. You had said one option that is sometimes used is to not have the entire surface prepared, and then if they need the extra spaces, then they can ask staff for approval. Is that, how does that work exactly?
It's mostly worked kind of the opposite, where it would, in cases where it's been utilized, it's when staff notices it, it's when the applicant is not trying to provide the full minimum. They have some as reserved, and then when staff notices that there's abundant parking on the street. So, this is a little bit different from that. But yes, it would theoretically work that the planning commission in this case would require maybe the four that are excess of the maximum be the reserved parking for future needs. And yeah, it would work that when they ask for permission, they could improve those.
Thank you. Do we have any more questions from the planning commission?
And I'll just note that that's not in the current approval, but that's an option that you would have if you want.
Any more questions? Commissioner Caneley?
Thank you, Chair. Like Commissioner Holmberg Johnson, I'm concerned about exceeding the required parking maximum. And looking at the map of the parking structure, I was looking for more bike spaces. I saw 13 indoors and I believe three racks outside. I'm curious if you can tell me what the rest of the bike parking looks like?
The bike parking was, we comply with required bike parking for whatever the underlying zoning is mixed use.
So, you indicated that there would be 37 that remain to meet the 55 minimum would be on wall, wall-hanging racks by the parking stalls. But they weren't depicted on the site plan.
Yeah, sorry. Yeah, there was, the requirement, I think, was 55 parking or bike parking stalls, one per year convincing. And 90% of those, I think, had to be secured, which is in our underground parking. And then of those, a certain percentage had to be, what was it?
Such that you don't lift them intubate. So, they, with what they propose, they would meet the percentages and minimum numbers. Typically, that's a verification that we do at the time that the building permits are applied for. In this case, we'd be looking to make sure that all 55 are provided in bike racks.
Thank you, thank you. Since approval will come at a later time for bike racks, I just want to state a strong preference for as many bike racks as possible that don't require lifting. If we do have excess parking spaces, I hope we can look for ways to make bike parking easier for the residents that we hope come to live here.
Yeah, no, and we will definitely do whatever, you know, work with you guys, staff, to incorporate whatever you need. I guess the main thing I want to bring up was a lot of times we have them on the walls, because you add so many biking spots underground on the floor, takes up parking stalls, I guess. So, I think it's parking stalls are things that we really want, try to have more of. That was kind of our thought, but, you know, we can look at that. There might be some bad spaces that might be conducive to having more parking or bike parking stalls on the ground. So, some things are looking.
Commissioner Holmberg, Johnson?
Related to that, I live in the Chamberlain, and most of the secure indoor bike parking spots are actually assigned to people who rent garage stalls for their cars and are not for people who don't have cars, which I don't think is an ideal setup. And they're also on the wall, they're, you know, that you have to lift to use them. Is that how you foresee assigning them to people who are renting parking stalls? Or would they be for any resident to use?
Yeah, I guess typically, we view that they have the parking stall and they have the bike rack. But that's certainly not set in stone. If that's important to not have, then, you know, we can look to not have that. It's, I mean, it's cheaper to not put the bike stalls on the wall. So, you know, if we can find a way to make that happen, I think that's a win-win for everyone. So, you know, that's a condition you could make or propose. And, you know, we'd be happy to work with the staff on any concerns like that, to make sure that parking is more accessible to people. That's what's important, I guess. We're flexible on that.
Any more questions from the planning commission? Commissioner Caneley?
Thank you, Chair. New topic related to parking. I was curious, do you have plans for electric vehicle charging stations and electric vehicle spots?
Yep. That was something that was brought up in the ERC report, like the initial feedback we received from staff. And they brought up that they would recommend that we include those and believe, what was it?
There is a minimum number required. The ordinance does allow for staff to make exceptions for certain cases where it's demonstrated or, you know, I guess requested that those would be utilized. In this case, we felt that there was a reasonable rationale that, given the intended demographic, that the full amount wouldn't be necessary. They had, I believe it was...
A two-level?
A number, I think it was 10 or 15 level twos or somewhere in that range. And then, or I think it was five level twos, and then the capacity to serve 20 additional stalls. Something of that magnitude.
Yeah. Unfortunately, I'm not a very knowledgeable in the electric vehicle terminology, but I do know what was recommended that we add. We're going to add that. I don't think we can add everything, but there is flexibility on that and affordability of this project. But we're open to adding things further.
Yeah. I think if so inclined, we could push for additional, at least conduits being installed, such that, you know, when the market is different, that they could more readily be installed for a wider number.
I want to make sure that I understood the numbers right when I looked up. Everything that's required for EV spots, I believe it's four to five spots for this particular project would be required, and 17 more spots that would be electric vehicle-ready.
That sounds right. We don't have the exact numbers in front of me right now, but that sounds a degree of magnitude in the ballpark.
Okay. Yeah, since I didn't see them on the, in the packet, I wanted to make sure we talked about it.
Yep. It's in the ARC report, I think, is the acronym of that report. But they provided comments, and we provided responses. Our response to that report incorporates what we plan for vehicles. We can get access to that, but that should have response. Unfortunately, I'm prepared.
Yep. Typically...
Specific, sorry.
A standard condition of approvals is that they would have to comply with the comments of ARC reports. That's a typical condition that is applied to most developments. Again, they were within the ballpark of what, with a reasonable amount of what was required versus what they're proposing. So, in light of their circumstances, we felt staff has the ability to modify the specific number and the, what they propose was reasonable.
Just on that point, to clarify, what is being proposed for this?
I don't have the precise numbers right in front of me, and I'm struggling to try to pull it up right now.
I wasn't sure if I lost that in the conversation of what the staff is proposing would be enough. I mean, I hear your concerns about the demographics, but I don't feel like we do, we should, feel like there should be a number attached, a known number attached to that. Thank you.
A spot that has a charger on it can still park a car that isn't electric. So, my thinking is, if it's an electric spot, that means somebody with an electric car can use it. And we want to encourage that.
Now, the one thing that I do have a question on, assuming that, you know, based on where the conversation is going, I'm assuming these are all market rate, and is there any affordability perspectives in these apartments?
Yeah, these are, they're actually all affordable. The 60% of the area median income. A lot of requests for flexibility on all of this stuff is because it's affordable. And there's certain, the resources for this are only finite. And with construction costs going up, we have to make sure it's a feasible project that the city can afford. That's where a lot of the flexibility comes from. But 100% of the units will be affordable to households making under 60% of the area median income. I think in counties, anywhere from $44,000 to $70,000 if you have five dependents per household. And then those rents will be mandated to stay at a certain level that people making under that income level pay no more. It will all be affordable.
Thank you. Do we have any more questions?
I wonder if we could, before we engage in any more discussion, if we could open the public hearing?
I would like to do that. I would like to do that. At this point, thank you for your time. I would like to open the public hearing. Staff, do we have any emails or voicemails on this item?
Chair Rudolph, we did not receive any emails or voicemails on this.
Do we have any callers on the line? I don't see any. As a reminder, the call-in number is 415-655-0001 with a meeting ID of 2467-722-5640 and the passcode of 1234. Do we have anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this subject? Please proceed to the podium and state your name and address. And I believe there's a sheet for you to, a logbook to write that down as well, ma'am. And you will have five minutes.
I had a couple of questions. I'm not sure. I couldn't hear some of it there, too. Are these purchased townhomes that are rental townhomes? And you said it was mixed housing, or is it like low-income plus high? What's the general, like, price of these townhomes? And then one of my concerns would be, I went at 7220 Wentworth, Janet Boxler, sorry. I just had a concern about high-density, and I'm not, I don't know if I quite understand it all. I read something, they were talking about something like Bella, City Bella properties. I don't want some big high-rise things going up in these areas is my concern. And meaning high-density, does that mean, is that why it's a four-level that makes it high? If it's three levels, it's low, medium? I don't quite understand all the criteria. So, it's only going to be four stories high, and nothing in that area will be 20 stories high? If it turns to high-density? I'm trying to clarify that. I don't want high-density everywhere over the city with all these. I can see City Bella a mile away, and I don't know that that fits in with a city of Richfield neighborhood. All of a sudden, you got these big things sticking up all over. I'd like to see things that fit more in with the neighborhoods. I'm not quite sure what this would look like, but those are just some of my questions, I guess. I just would prefer medium-density versus high-density. My only question. Thank you.
Anyone, if that could be...
Well, I'm just wondering if staff could show her the pictures that we have in our packet, so she could see that it's not a, that it's not a high-rise?
Could this defer until we're done with the public hearing section to answer these questions? That would be fine. Now, it might not be a bad idea as well to put it on the camera, so the people in the audience that may be viewing in public can see it. Julie, could we put that visual up and maybe repeat what you said to her on the microphone? So the people in the audience can hear. There we go.
Sorry, it seemed easier to just show her. But sure, so it's four, four stories is the proposed building and that's what it would be. It would not be twelve stories. And the density I explained is, is calculated with the number of units for the size of the property itself. And so that's where that density term comes from. So it's fifty-five units of rental apartments that will be affordable at that sixty percent of the area median income that Ryan explained.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else that would like to speak on this subject? Do we have any callers on the line? I see not. At this point, I would like to close the public hearing. Do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say no. Commissioners, it's time, I guess, for a discussion of, or further questions of staff or the applicant. To the applicant, please refrain from jumping in during this part of the commission, though you might be asked questions further.
Chair Rudolph, I have a question for staff. So if this were re-guided as high density and this project for some reason didn't, you know, fell through, what would happen? Could a, could a high-rise come in then?
So the underlying zoning district has height limitations for the mixed-use neighborhood zoning designation that it's currently under. The maximum height is eight stories maximum. So that's the overall zoning maximum for the, for the height. And then you'd be subject to airport zoning heights, which I'm not sure would necessarily impact that eight-foot limitation. But eight would be eight story, excuse me, would be the maximum.
My question, staff, so under the current zoning, you said we could go eight stories, but is it because it would be higher density than is allowed? Or I'm trying to understand why we would need to change the zoning if we can build eight stories currently.
I'm not sure that I understand the question. Can you maybe rephrase?
Oh, with rezoning, we can go eight stories. What is the current?
The current is mixed-use neighborhood, which has an eight-story height limitation. The planned unit development establishes, basically, you can think of it as a new zoning that's specific to the site and specific to the project. So you would be approving the, the four stories.
I have a question for staff. Okay, thank you. So our, our motion or proposed action here tonight is to approve the planned unit development for this particular site, correct?
Correct.
So then, at a later stage, will this be back before us as it gets closer to implementation? Or how does this go from here?
The action tonight would be also the final development plan of that. So this would be the, the zoning approvals for, for the project. There would be no precise implementation plan or any, any other subsequent actions zoning-wise that the planning commission would have to weigh in on.
Okay, so this, this is our one review of this project. Got it, okay.
Now, the one thing that I was thinking is, you know, one of my concerns is the proximity to the railroad. Obviously, having kids myself, you know, kids will be kids, you know. You know, they will go where they're not supposed to go. And, you know, I've got a safety concern being so close to the railroad, being really right, right in their backyard. You know, I don't think I really want to have that on my hands, honestly, to be in so close. I think it's a beautiful building. I think a lot of the other things meet, maybe meet my criteria. Except, you know, I've got a safety concern for children here, being so close. You know, I, I've looked at the property, I walked the property. It's really, there's no way that a child could not wander down there if, if so be. It's, that's some of my thinking right now. I'm not sure what others are thinking.
To that point?
Commissioner Sturmer.
I mean, I would just like to point out that it is currently zoned for medium-density residential. So it's not like we are creating new residential zoning. It is by right that, that residential living will occur on that property. So I, I feel like that is not something that I could consider in the review of this project. On that note, I do share concerns that have been raised about exceeding the maximum parking. I feel like that sets a very poor precedent. I do understand that this property has very limited off-site parking, which is somewhat unique. And I hear your needs from your parking studies, your previous parking studies. But I do think that I, I I think that the, we might want to consider doing the phased additional parking. And I do think that we should, I don't know what the number is, but I do think that we should have clear guidance that, about the electric vehicles. Like, we need to have something specific or some specific direction in that regard as well. Were the two things that came up in our discussions. I would like to say that I am excited about this development. I think that this will be a great addition to the city. This site is a difficult site. And I think that, I appreciated that the developer took our feedback in our work session. I like the tot lot, the community space that was added, I think is really important. It still is a tough site and I think what we have proposed tonight is pretty exciting for the city.
Any more comments or questions?
Ms. Chair Rudolph, I, I appreciate the, that you did the study of your other sites to come to that conclusion of one point five. And that was our, our ratio about two years ago. But there's, I assume there's no money in having more parking than you need. I don't know if that's worth coming to the microphone board, you can just shake your head. But I mean, I assume there is absolutely no benefit for a developer to have more parking than they need. So I do respect their study and their decision to do this. And that's just not, not just a plug for more parking. I just think they wouldn't propose that because it, it's not a money-making proposition unless they thought it was good, good business. So I, I, I think you've done a lot of due diligence in different areas, I appreciate that.
Do we have a, who would be the next thing? Do we have a, have a motion, I would assume? Do we do all these together or separately?
I'm hearing that there's interest to apply additional conditions. You can act on those motions, or those conditions separately or altogether. Probably cleaner if you do it separately. And then make a, I don't think I've heard a motion yet to approve the whole item. So the recommendation would be to go about that and then take motions on individual conditions. And then once all those are weighed in on, then move the whole body. So the whole, all approvals with the modified conditions.
Yeah, like last time where we, we went through various conditions and discussed them one by one. I think that.
Do we, do we have anybody that has any proposed conditions?
Chair Rudolph, I have one quick question for our staff about procedure. So with those three recommended actions, did you say we should do them individually? Or we could, I suppose, either or not? Because it, there, there's a lot there.
There is a lot there. We've typically done, done them kind of in combination. So that's kind of our, our typical request.
Okay. Altogether, you mean?
Yeah.
Okay, should I make a motion? Yeah, so I will make a motion to recommend approval of amending the comprehensive plan designation for the subject property from medium-density residential to high-density residential and recommend approval of rezoning in subject, the subject property from mixed-use neighborhood to planned mixed-use. And thirdly, recommend approval of a planned unit development, conditional use permit and final development plan for a multifamily residential development at seven-seven-hundred Pillsbury Avenue South.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have any discussion?
Mr. Chair, I would, I would like to add a proposed condition that the parking, that the impervious surface exception not be granted, that instead those extra floor spaces are not paved and then subject to, if they believe they need those extra spaces, they can then go to staff for approval of those. But at the time of construction, they not be given approval to exceed the impervious surface standard.
Staff, did you follow that? Do we need to rephrase that?
I genuinely get the idea, but I just want to be clear with regard to the number of stalls. So the maximum number they are exceeding by four, those four likely wouldn't get them to the impervious maximum. So I'm hearing the intent would just be relevant to the additional stalls beyond the maximum.
Yes, that's, that's, that's correct, I'm sorry.
Could you restate the motion then? Thank you.
I, I move that we amend the approval to deny the additional four parking spaces until or unless the cities, they applied the city staff for those additional spots. Is that, is that clear?
And I'm, I would hear that you would, I would suggest that maybe you include that we, we would look at that with sufficient evidence that they need it.
Yeah, subject to approval from staff with sufficient evidence that it's necessary.
So you're separating this from the impervious discussion then, separate matters, correct? The, the, the parking stall, the extra parking stalls in the impervious surface area, we're treating them as separate matters then? Okay, got it, yep, that's what I meant.
Do we have any other?
Do we have to approve each? Yeah, I'd second that if we need to approve that amendment or that condition.
Yes, do we have a second?
That's what I'm doing, yep, second.
Okay, and now, do we, we vote on that one separately? Okay, so do we have a discussion on this?
Chair Rudolph, I forgot what I was gonna say. I, I, I'm concerned about what is sufficient evidence. I can't imagine the developer then going out there taking pictures and monitoring how many parking times people are parking somewhere else and going through that effort and that extra expense to then add more impervious space. So I would, I would oppose that.
Any more discussion? All right. All in favor of the amendment, say aye. All opposed, say no.
No.
The amendment passes? Now, it looks like we've got a vote on the original motion.
Can we? Would Commissioner Canelli like to add anything in regards to the electric vehicles?
Thank you, yes. As you said earlier, we would like to see clear direction on, on the number of spaces. With four to five spots required and up to seventeen more needing to be EV-ready, I'm, I'm curious if city staff can provide a number that was agreed upon or might be sufficient.
Fortunately, the note that has that exact number is, I can't access it from this computer. So I, I cannot give you the specific number. But hearing this, I would maybe recommend that a motion be put forward that would, I guess, present the issue to the council for, for final decision on the specific number that would be allowed in terms of both EV-ready and EV-installed. I just, I'm locked out of that note right now.
Thank you. I am happy to make that motion that city council is, is able to weigh in on that item.
I think good work.
Can I just clarify? I'm a little confused about why, why this would go to city council next to weigh in about EVs. What's, I think I missed a step here.
So, so I think Commissioner Canelli wants, has concerns about the number of EV-ready parking spots that he wants to address with his motion. Correct. And if you could word that and then we will proceed on it?
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm having a, a difficult time finding a way to word the, the motion that I want to make. Because, because we don't know exactly what we're dealing with on the, on the packet and on the map. But my, my request is that we, we move to have a number of electric vehicle parking spots that are sufficient to meet the required four to five and, and close to the required for EV-ready. And if that is four spots that are set aside for EV parking and another twelve that are ready, I'm comfortable with that number. This is a very long motion. Thank you.
So I just did some calculations for reference. So the requirements pertain to the number of enclosed spaces, right? So with forty-eight enclosed spaces, they need five level-two chargers to be installed. They need ten EV-ready level-two charging sta- stations. All the remaining are required to be ready for level-one chargers.
Thank you.
I believe the proposal was in the ballpark of five level-twos provided and then something like ten or twenty charging, or EV-ready. And I'm not sure if that was level one or two.
Commissioner Canelli, is that sufficient without needing a motion?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
Do we have any other conditions that we would like to discuss?
To clarify, we're not going to make a motion on the electric, electric vehicle requirements at this point. Is that what I'm hearing from you?
I'm sorry, I was doing the calculation, so I didn't get that exact wording when you, when you put the motion forward. Can you repeat that, please? Can you repeat that, please? Something there close to?
Ryan, I, I thought we.
Can I make a motion? Yes, I would say that for, for discussion, let's, and simplicity sake, we will halv- have, H-A-L-V-E, the requirements for this proposal for the electric vehicles across the board for all different things. And, and, but purposes of this purpo- or for this motion, and to get something on record that the commission is serious about electric vehicles, I, I would like to see a number, and because we don't have better guidance, I would say we can just halve it because I understand that there are extenuating circumstances on this site, and I would encourage city staff in their conver- or in their presentation to city council to, if there is a recommendation, to deviate from what the planning commission recommends, to have a specific number and rationale for that number for the city council presentation. So my motion would be to require half the amount of electric vehicle parking that is typically required for this development.
Seconded. Do we have any discussion on this? Chair Quan?
I'm sorry about this, but I'm, I'm sorry, I'm confused. So there is a, Mr. Sturso, there's a required amount of, and we're halving it, why? Just, I don't.
From what city staff and what the developer has said, they think that, given the demographics of this, of the people living in this building, they don't anticipate the need to be there. So, given that and given my support for affordable housing, I want to see this project move forward, I want it to be financially feasible and reasonable, and it's a PUD, I think, and I also want developers to know that we're serious about the electric vehicle requirements that we just enacted. This is my way of trying to show good faith on both sides.
Thank you.
Any more discussion?
Chair Rudolph, this is my last one. Did the representative for the applicant need to weigh in on that? Amendment to, do you feel a need to weigh in on the amendment to have, to, for what was the amendment about electric vehicle? Pardon me? Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure they didn't have a strong feeling we were overlooking. Thanks.
All right, would we like to vote on this amendment to require half the amount?
I'll second.
Yes, I thought I did. All right. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, say no. The motion passes. Now, do we have any more discussion or any amendments that Commissioner Holwick-Johnson?
Yes, I move to add a condition that there be secure bicycle storage available for those who do not rent parking stalls, so that even if you aren't renting a parking stall, you will have access to secure indoor bike storage.
Okay, do we have any, a second on this motion?
Seconded.
Any discussion?
Chair Rudolph, I have a question. How much are you, is there a number for how much your?
Yeah, that's a fair question, obviously. My concern is that it'd just not be like how it is in my building where the only indoor secure storage is for people who are renting parking stalls, and that's completely opposite to the idea of encouraging people to leave behind their cars. So whatever the staff, there was, is there a minimum secure requirement identified right now?
Ninety percent need to be in an enclosed.
Okay.
Area.
So I would say then, but just for the sake of the discussion we've heard, the condition would be I move that fifty percent of the bicycle spots be secure and available to those who are not renting a parking stall, regardless of whether they're renting a parking stall or not. So fif- let me clarify, I'm sorry. I move that we require that fifty percent of the required bicycle spaces be available, secure, regardless of whether the tenant has rented a parking stall. But, clear?
Thank you.
Do we have a second on this motion?
Seconded.
Do we have any discussion?
I have a question, clarifying question. So, Ri- Ri- Ryan, what was the ninety percent figure applied to again?
So fifty-five stalls are required, bike parking stalls, ninety percent of those fifty-five need to be in enclosed, secure area.
So then the fifty percent would apply to those who are not renting a vehicle space, is that correct? I'm a little confused how these numbers interact here.
I'm just proposing that we detach, that fifty percent of the total required spots be available whether or not you are renting a parking stall. So what, if, if you, so whether or not you have a car, at least fifty percent of those required bicycle spots be available to you as a tenant.
Okay.
So fifty percent of the total number of required spots, fifty percent of those need to be available to any tenant.
As part of our discussion, I actually had a question for the applicant. You know, the one thing we didn't hear, I guess, is will you be charging for parking spots?
Our intention was to not charge for parking spots, but we are asking for tax increment financing on this project, and for ailers who the city hired to review our tactic for financing request, it was recommended that we charge for parking to help increase the sizing of our mortgage, which would allow for lower affordability households or units. So the thought was you would charge for parking, but then we would have a few households or units that would be fifty percent of the area median income, and it was just a way to help find a way to balance that need. So currently, we are anticipating charging for the parking.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any more discussion on this item?
I'll second.
Do we have any more discussion? It's like a vote? All in favor of this amendment, say aye.
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 All opposed, say no. The amendment passes. Do we have any more discussion on any additional amendments to this proposal? All right, why don't we take a vote on this item? Public hearing to consider request for comprehensive plan amendment, planning unit development, final development plan, and conditional use permit for multifamily development at 7700 Pillsbury Avenue South. All in favor, say aye.
Oh, yeah, sorry, I was just, I think it would be helpful if I reiterate the, the motions that approved regarding extra conditions.
Okay. Thank you.
So the first one was that the four stalls above the minimum, no, maximum number is not approved, but can be designed as reserved parking stalls, and the applicant can request from staff with sufficient evidence to approve those stalls. The second one was that fifty percent of the three ratios of electric vehicle parking be provided, and with the understanding that if staff's recommendation differs, then that would be explained to the council at their meeting. And then the last one is that fifty percent of the bicycle parking enclosed stalls would be available to those not renting vehicle stalls.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed, say no. No. The motion passes. I want to thank you very much for those that spoke at the public hearing as well as from the applicant. All your guidance and insight is appreciated. The next item we have on the agenda is for a public hearing to consider a request for a variance for a trash enclosure location farther away from the building. Staff, do we have a report?
Chair, Chair Rudolph, members of the planning commission, Hope Church is the applicant, and they are requesting a variance for a new dumpster enclosure location on the green space at the south end of the property. The zoning code requires that refuse and recycling and utilitarian element, elements are designed into the interior space of buildings. The code interacts with the recent renovations of the church, which consisted of less than a hundred percent increase of the floor area of that time, so therefore, staff approved a administrat- administratively approved a trash location that was just outside of the, the building, counter to that specific requirement that it be enclosed. This approved location was north, on the north side of the property, and was allowed because of its proximity to the building and its distance from adjoining properties, with the nearest residence being approximately a hundred fifty feet. This variance request is for the new, of new proposed refuse enclosure location, which would be further away from the church building than it is currently approved for, and it would also be closer to adjoining properties, specifically, it would be upwards of eighty-five feet to the nearest residential building, which is a multifamily building to the south. Staff did not approve this specific request because it requires that trash and recycling be carried a greater distance than the current approved location, and it is closer to a residential building. It's our interpretation that the intent of the enclosure, the trash enclosure room rule in the zoning code is that it minimizes the effect that trash and refuse enclosures have on neighboring properties by keeping those receptacles close to the building where trash is generated from, and again, away from those properties. Staff feels that the variance, if approved, could negatively affect the multifamily homes to the south and could lead in, in case, to cases where trash is blowing away from the wind because of the fact that it, it, it would be hauled further away from, from the building. The resolution of approval for their addition in 2020 specified that the undeveloped portion of the property must be maintained as landscaping or green area. This stipulation was specifically applied because, in the previous approval, because there was a additional parking area that was approved near the main entrance, and that was approved in exchange for preserving green space for future development in the area now proposed for the trash enclosure. So it, there could be a case where that enclosure might need to be moved again when the future redevelopment, if it ever comes to fruition. The applicant has placed dumpsters in this location over the past several months while they're working on construction, and they found that the location is preferable, and they note that they are not able to find another suitable location for an enclosure anywhere around the existing building, and the previous location that the dumpster is approved for is too close to a main entrance. Staff is recommending denial of this variance because it does not meet the specific requirements for approval, but we are certainly open to working with the applicant to find alternative locations that would meet their needs and still meet the intent of the ordinance. So this item has a public hearing, so following the public hearing, we are recommending denial of the application. I'd be happy to answer any questions, and there are representatives from the church that can certainly answer any that you have as well.
One question I would have is how, how big is this trash bin? You know, I'm assuming it's fairly large, you know? You know, and what is the typical distance of trash bins, apartment buildings, or other places of this size?
You know, it depends. We haven't specifically studied. It, it varies, right? I would say that this, there's nothing abnormally large about this particular proposed enclosure. It's eleven by twenty, and they would have a six-foot fence around it. But again, the, the new code is intended to have a higher standard, and the standard is that its refuse enclosures are, are enclosed. So again, don't have, there, there's a variation of, of situations out there.
Okay. Any questions for city staff, or would we, I think we'd like to hear from the applicant themselves on this issue? If you could. Go ahead, Commissioner Cuneli, unless you want them to speak first.
Question for city staff.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. I, I saw in the, the report a few times that if the enclosure is built on the new proposed location, that it's likely to have to be moved?
Yep. So again, they identified in their 2020 plans that the area where the new location is proposed for is slated for future redevelopment of facilities for, for the church. Again, that was part of the 2020 approvals where it, it, there were additional parking areas that were approved on the north side in exchange for allowing the, the reservation of that area.
Any more questions for city staff? I would like to hear from the applicant, please. If you could, please state your name, your address, and who you represent.
My name is David Lenz, and I'm the lead pastor at Hope Church. My residence is 13956 Drummond Trail in Apple Valley. Church location is 7132 Portland Avenue South, just down the road. I've been the lead pastor at Hope Church for nearly twenty years. I thank you for this opportunity to come and speak before you. I thank you for what you do, and it's been very interesting for me to listen tonight to see how you're so engaged in making Richfield a vibrant and ever-improving community. That's appreciated. We see ourselves as partners with you in helping to make Richfield a great place to work and live and play. We're in the midst of a major renovation and building program that we believe brings value and beauty to Richfield, and perhaps you've seen what's happening as you drive down Portland Avenue. We want to thank you for your support of this project that you've provided in various ways, and for the ways that the city of Richfield has supported Hope Church over many years. We're grateful for Mayor Regan Gonzalez and Councilmember Sean Hayford-O'Leary for participating in our groundbreaking last May. We're grateful for the presence of many city leaders when Hope Church hosted the funeral service in February for Jamari Rice after his tragic murder. Thank you, city planning staff, for reviewing our petition. We appreciate the gracious way you presented tonight, and we hope to win you over to our point of view. We believe Hope Church is an asset and a resource for Richfield, a place where people can come five nights a week for free hot meals, a place where people in addiction programs and various stages of loss and recovery, refugees, those starting over after incarceration and domestic abuse and homelessness, those who are battling mental illness, and families in crisis and poverty, can receive free clothing and household goods, a safe place for Richfield middle school and senior high school students to gather under the supervision of adults who genuinely care for them. Our facility is a large one, and an unusual one, with many points of entrance that are used by children and youth and families and members of the community. Each one of these entrances is functionally like a front door to our facility. We want our front doors to be beautiful and welcoming. For many years, our dumpsters were centrally located in the Portland Avenue parking lot. It was a blemish for those who are arriving to our facility, as well as for those inside who are looking out. When we applied for and received our conditional use permit, we chose a proposed dumpster location to comply with city code, and we did this at a time before our plans for the bulk of our facility that runs along Fourth Avenue had really been solidified in our own thinking. Plans to recast that space as Hope Center, an asset to be used by our community. At the time we chose, what, at that time, we chose what we regarded as the least bad choice among those available to us for dumpster location, and as time has passed, we've increasingly regretted that choice. regretted that choice. The proposed location is adjacent to our sanctuary, the focal point of our facility. We can envision the disruption of garbage trucks coming and going during funeral services, conferences, and community events. This proposed location is adjacent to newly created space for our preschool and school-age care programs. This proposed location is adjacent to our Fourth Avenue parking lot, where we have a kind of natural amphitheater for outdoor events such as Community 5K runs and Vacation Bible Schools, and just as we did this past Sunday, April 17th, we had an outdoor Easter sunrise service. We would much prefer for these events not to be so proximate to dumpsters. In short, we believe that the proposed location impedes how our facility can best serve Richfield and our congregation. During our construction phase for our renewed, for our renewed Hope building project, we've moved the dumpsters, as was noted, to a temporary location on the south end of our property, and we've discovered what a good location this is, largely hidden from view, near where the bulk of the trash in our facility is generated, clean and well-maintained with easy access for garbage trucks. We believe this is the right place for our dumpsters and respectfully seek your approval for this request of variance. I'm going to turn to my colleague Ben Ford, who is a member of Hope Church and a civil engineer, to give a little more technical information.
My name is Ben Ford. I've been, I'm a civil engineer on this project. I'm recently retired, so I can't say what company I was with, but I am a civil engineer. I'm helping Hope Church kind of guide this process with the variance application. My home address is 1119 Tiffany Drive, Eagan, 55123. I just wanted to go over just a couple of the, I guess, the findings of staff regarding some of the elements that go into a variance request. The first one is the practical difficulties. Staff found that there were no practical difficulties. I think practical difficulty to some extent is in the eye of the beholder. Pastor Lenz put kind of forth our vision for our entrances and why it's important that those entrances put their best face forward to the public, and the location where it is now is, doesn't work very well, doesn't work at all. And part of that is just because the way the site is developed, the site is from the, developed from the ground up. You identify an area that's going to be like a loading area and a trash area that's kind of at the back door of a building. This building, as I said, I've been a member for 50 years at Hope Church and it's in the site developed. It's developed kind of organically with connections between the school, and basically the entire perimeter of the building has, has become a front door for different doors. So we're kind of stuck here as, as we develop this most recent plan, thinking, well, could we, how could we work into that plan? But the problem with that is this most recent plan is really the most important part of the building, the most facing Portland Avenue. It's really the, kind of the, it's the visual, the visual key to our building that we were missing on Portland Avenue up to this point. So there really were no, no opportunities to build that trash enclosure into the building or near the new addition. So then we were stuck with trying to find the best spot around the existing building. As we've said before, we end up, end up with just a lot of front doors to the building that the public uses that makes it very difficult. In our, in our opinion, that is a practical difficulty to the site, that we really, that has just developed over time and hasn't really done just because this project is coming forth right now. I want to speak also to the unique circumstances here because the, because as I said, there has no, there is no, there is no loading area, there is no, there was no opportunity to develop that area as part of the new plan, as I said before. So it's, it's very difficult to, with the unique circumstances here, to develop anything that doesn't affect our, kind of our, our look to the community as they're approaching our building, and we want to have, be that one of excellence and beauty. I also want to speak also to the, maybe the most important thing, I think, which is the neighborhood character and how this banner does not affect the neighborhood character. I think that's what's key to this. In fact, it wasn't clear from the code what the intent was, which is why Ryan kind of spoke to what their interpretation as to the intent of this code item. And I think by almost every metric, with the exception of maybe just pure distance to the multifamily to the south, this is a better location. There's much, much less visibility to this, to the newly proposed location from the public right of way. There's really only about a 20-foot corridor as you drive by our south entrance coming off of Fourth Avenue that you could see this dump, this trash enclosure. There's over 200 feet along Fourth Avenue that you'd be able to see the trash enclosures you drive farther north along to the currently proposed location. So it's considerably less visible from the public right of way. It's also, the setback from the public right of way is, would be 335 feet from the newly proposed location versus 240 feet from the proposed location, so it's set back farther, less visible. Regarding the number of houses that it's visible from, because there are so many houses that front fourth, 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 there's probably six or seven houses that have a full view to the front of this trash enclosure. If you look at the proposed trash enclosure, the newly proposed trash enclosure, its face is facing toward our building, so the houses that are seeing this, or any buildings that potentially see this, are seeing the back of it. They would not be seeing the doors, they would never see doors open, it would always be the back. And in almost all the cases, the, the houses that will be seeing it are, it's the back of the house rather than the front of the house, because they're now, they're not fronting forth, they're the backyards of a couple of houses along the fence, and there's a fence line there, there's barrages that break up that, and there's green, greenery along that area, so. And to speak specifically then to the apartment buildings to the south, although it is closer, it's only 80, about 85 feet, I think I measured it as 90 feet, but very close to what staff had said it was, there's a long, I don't know if we have a map that can show up, but there's a long bank of barrages that completely block the visibility. Furthermore, there's a fence that's behind those barrages, it has a lot of greenery that's, that's growing up through that. Furthermore, there is, we have a large storage building that's almost probably equivalent of a two-story building that, that this is going to sit behind to the north of, that further blocks it. So the visit, although it is closer to those apartment buildings maybe than a couple of houses, it is much, much less visible because of how many, how much there is blocking.
I've got, I've got a question for you.
Sure.
In, in looking at the design from the previous approved dumpster to the current location, I actually, two questions. How busy is that lot during the day for what they would be trash pickup? I would assume, it's one of the questions. The other, the other question I have, if you could answer that one first.
So you're saying the currently approved lot location?
Yeah. The current, the previous approved, you know, when, you know, when did you find out from your designs, your building designs? You know, was it just recently that, you know, you found out it wasn't going to work? You know, or is... The previous location that you've got? It looks like it's on the Fourth Avenue side.
Correct.
And how heavy is that lot used? Is it, you know, difficulty driving up to pick up the trash? It looks like, I'm not sure, I haven't been to Hope Church before, is that the back entrance? Is that the front entrance?
Again, that's, that's kind of what Pastor Lenz is speaking to, is that being a critical instance, serving a significant portion of that lot, church on Sundays and under... Yeah, it's, that lot is used extensively every day. We have many people who are coming, part of our Vine and Branches Clothing Ministry, where I was talking about the various ways that we support with household goods and free clothing for people in, in need. They use that parking lot. Whenever we would have a funeral service, it's very likely that lot would be used. We had this unusual split lot off Portland Avenue and off of Fourth Avenue, but both lots are extensively used every day of the week.
Do we have any more questions before?
I just had one other point, just that was brought up by staff, was it had to do with, you know, how far we would have to haul trash? And granted, it is a little bit farther to take it from the, where we're currently going to, where we're proposing it now, about 100 feet from a door versus about 50 feet from the door in the, in the currently approved location. But we have never had, as far as I know, we've never had a complaint. We've had trash enclosure dumpsters, as it is, out in the middle of our parking lot for 30, 40, forever, and I don't believe we've ever seen, received a complaint about any trash ever blowing across the parking lots. I don't think that's an issue in terms of just the differential between how, how far it is to haul it. And the fact is, the fact of the matter is, it's just that much closer to where the trash is now going to be generated, and more in the south side of the building than the north.
All right, thank you. Any commissioners have any questions? Commissioner Hovig-Johnson?
I had a question for city staff. I'm finding the potential of disruption of sanctuary services to be compelling, especially for funerals or things. Is there any issues, did the city identify any issues with religious land use federal requirements about disruption of, disruption of worship and religious activities? Because from what I understand, that, that gives religious institutions some leeway with planning requirements when it affects their practice of...
Yeah, I guess what I can speak to in regard to that was, this was a proposal that we approved that they admitted, right? So from that standpoint, it wasn't assessed under that, that law, again, because it was something that they were proposing.
But we'd certainly take refuge there.
Any other questions I'd like to, Commissioner Serman?
Yeah, a question for staff here. So clarify a bit, I know I mentioned a bit in the report, so that the variance is required for this, but what is the root cause triggering a variance here? Is it just because it's different from the previously approved location, or is it because of, is it triggered by the proximity to residential dwelling?
So there aren't setbacks, right? Because the intent of the code is that it's within the building, and then whatever the building is setback from would be the theoretical setback of the enclosure. In this case, they propose, you know, an exterior location with their conditional use permit approvals, and staff was okay with, with what they proposed. The variance is necessary because from our standpoint, they're moving further away from what the code requires, right? They're moving further away from the building and closer to adjoining properties. So that's what we find the variance is necessary for.
And the previous location was where it is right now? On that northwest corner of the lot?
Well, it's, it's never been built, so it's not there, but it would be...
Oh, there's no structure right now?
Yeah, they're still under construction.
So it's because it's a structure in a new location, that's why variance is needed? Because it's a dumpster structure outside of the building?
Yeah, again, the, the variance is to allow for the structure to be closer to the, an adjoining property and further away from the building, right? Because the code requires that it be within the building and have an approved location for it.
I see. Any more questions at this time? I would like to open the public hearing, if anybody would like to speak about this. Have we had any emails?
Chair Rudolph, we did not have any emails or voicemails on this request.
Okay. Do we have anybody on the line? Looks like not. I would like to close the public hearing on this matter. Do we have a motion?
I move to close the public hearing.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say no. At this point, we have some discussion on this matter between us.
Chair Rudolph, this is, looking in our packet, on page 57, required findings for variance. There are practi, there are, we are acting in a quasi-legal role when we consider variances, and we're pretty limited on what we can do. This is one of those really strict ones where we don't get to decide what is, you know, just because it's aesthetically better or practically better. It simply has to meet the variance requirements set forth by the state of Minnesota and the city code. And one of the first ones is practical difficulties that prevent the property owner from using the property in a reasonable manner. Staff's determined, and I don't see that there are any practical difficulties which would keep the church from using it in a practical manner. There are not unusual circumstances that couldn't have been addressed. I know we don't always see what's going to happen with a remodel until it happens, but that, that was not met. The second finding, the third finding, the variance would not alter the character of the neighborhood or the locality. That's, you know, we can debate that. Staff's interpretation is that the intent of the enclosed trash room rules in the zoning code is to minimize the effect of the trash and refuse. So the variance could affect the multifamily homes to the south and could lead to trash blowing, so it does not meet that one. The variance is the minimum necessary to alleviate the practical difficulty. There is no practical difficulty based on staff's assessment, and I agree. And is it in harmony with the general purpose intent of the ordinance and consistent with the comprehensive plan? The variance requested is not in harmony with the intent of the zoning ordinance, which is to minimize the effect of trash and refuse. So my point in going through all that is, you made some really compelling arguments about being near, near the sanctuary and the peace you want there, and that it's like a front door. But we simply have to meet those criteria where our hands are pretty tied on, on these variances. They're really pretty black and white. They're up for interpretation, but we cannot vote for a variance because we like the design and the good that you're doing for the community. It's not enough. That's not the argument for us to consider. That's all I have. Thanks.
Commissioner Quam, I, I agree with you. I think, I think there's many things in here where I would even see that it may meet, but I'm not sure it meets all of them. As, I, I, looking at the aesthetics of where you would be going from to going to, I think it personally is much more pleasing. I don't see the difficulty of it being that close to the neighbors. I see that they've got one probably about equal size as well, right next to their building, but looking at all the questions that we need to answer and answer correctly to approve the variance, I don't see all of the boxes being checked as much as I want them to. Do we have any other, more discussion, any other thoughts? Commissioner Hovig-Johnson?
I, I would say that, yeah, reviewing it, it, it can't meet all, all of the qualifications, and obviously if it fails, one, we can't approve the variance. But just a question for staff. This is an area where it's a city council policy issue in terms of the city code, so potentially the city council could revise the code ordinance that is causing this issue. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And, and this is just a recommendation for the council? They can go to the council to...
This is the final decision on the variance tonight.
And staff, or Chair Rudolph, the planning commission can also initiate a change to the code?
I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't catch that.
Can the planning commission, not at this meeting, but in general, the planning commission can initiate a change to...
As a recommend body, you can work on...
I see.
Those, those changes.
Yeah, okay.
How would we go about initiating a change like that?
We could schedule time in a future meeting to have, have a discussion and work on kind of what the, what the policies would be, and then staff would take that direction, craft an ordinance, and take it through the typical process for zoning that involves a public hearing here at the planning commission and then two readings at the city council.
I, I see what our practical difficulties are today, but if I could ask, as chair, if we could look at that further? I, I, do we have any more discussion on this matter? Do we have a, do we have a motion on this item?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve Resolution 243, denying the permission for the variance.
Do we have a second?
A second.
All right, at this point, we'd like to take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. It looks like the, the variance is denied. As much as I had hoped we could do something, we have to check all the boxes. Maybe there's other... hoped we could do something, we have to check all the boxes. Maybe there's other things that we can do as a planning commission to look at the code that is preventing you from doing this. Thank you very much for your time today. I really appreciate it, and keep doing the good things that you are doing in this community. All right, at this time, we have liaison reports. The first one would be me, Community Services Commission. I do not have a report from the Community Services Commission. City Council.
Yes, Chair Rudolph, thank you. The main thing I wanted to share is what most, most of us have probably heard is that Mayor Regan Gonzalez is not running for reelection for another term. So she will, her term expires January 2nd of next year. So there will be, depending on how many candidates for mayor or even at-large city council, there may be a primary election on August 9th. The general election is November 8th. And I think we've all really appreciated Mayor Regan Gonzalez's leadership. I certainly have, and so we will have a new mayor next year.
Wow. HRA?
I take that back. The HRA met in a joint session with the planning commission and the city council to discuss a proposal on the hub location. We were all in attendance, but I just feel like the more the public is aware that there was a discussion there and the feedback that was given, I think, the better.
Richfield School Board. Transportation Commission?
Yes. So Transportation Commission, they're meeting a couple weeks ago, considered three different items to recommend approval, so the City of Richfield could enter into a regional solicitation, application through the Met Council for three transportation projects. All three of these, or at least in some way related to safe routes to schools initiatives. One about constructing a multi-use trail along 73rd Street between Lyndale and I-35W, as well as modernizing the pedestrian bridge over 35W. Another for four-three lane conversion on 76th Street between Sheridan and Xerxes, and as well as some miscellaneous pedestrian improvements on 73rd Street in the vicinity of Centennial School. And all three of those were forwarded to the city council for action and approval as part of the city's grant request from the Met Council for the regional solicitation.
Thank you. Chamber of Commerce, Sustainability Commission?
No report.
All right. First of all, I would, I should have said this at the beginning. I want to thank Chair Quam for all the guidance she has given the planning commission over the last two years. This is not an easy job. There's a lot of things to remember. There's a lot of things to do to keep us moving forward, and I can only hope to, to do an equal or even half the job that you have done over the last two years. And I want to thank you for all the work that you've done for the planning commission.
Thank you, Chair Rudolph. You're doing just as well as I ever did, but thank you for that.
At, at this time, I would like to, we've got a motion to adjourn the plan. Oh, yeah, sorry. The city planners report.
I'll make a few, a couple things. As I'm sure everybody knows, the Benefactor Brewing folks pulled their application before it was considered by the city council. So the council did not move forward on that request. And then a couple of key dates to keep in mind, tomorrow at 6:00, there is a work session with the council and HRA on the Legion site. And then following that, on May 10th, there is a work session, and council and HRA, to discuss our continued work on missing middle housing. And that is all.
All right. Thank you very much. And at this time, do we have a motion to adjourn? Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. And we are adjourned.